Whenever you're ready.
We are recording.
All right, well, let's get started. I know you have an election tomorrow. Need to get to bed early.
Thank you.
All right, welcome, everybody. This is the Swamaco Village Board meeting for Monday, February 19th, 2024. The time is 6:00 PM. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. I would look for a motion to approve this evening's agenda. I have a motion from Trustee Rodden to approve this evening's agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Trustee Eckert. Any other further discussion on the agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries five to zero. Let's stand and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. So, this evening, for those in the audience, this evening, our first item is the Long Tail Point Beach Restoration Project, and we have a guest here, Administrator Kager.
Yeah, I'd like to invite Bree Kupsky from the DNR up to the front. She's going to go over an upcoming DNR project that will hopefully rehabilitate the Long Tail Point Beach. And, Bree, I'll let you just run through it. If you want me to go through your slides here, I will.
Sounds good.
And I'll just let you take it away. Go ahead.
Okay, so thank you for having me tonight. So I work in the Office of Great Waters at DNR. I'm the Green Bay Program Coordinator. Just a little bit of context about what we do in the Office of Great Waters. We provide a long-term vision and plan for our Great Lakes and the Mississippi River. We do that through four kind of primary programs that you see there. The one that I'm going to be talking about tonight is our Area of Concern Program. You can go ahead and go to the next one. Just a little bit of background, a lot of people aren't familiar with what an area of concern is, but there's several areas that were identified throughout the Great Lakes back in the late 1980s that were highly contaminated, had a lot of really severe degradation, right? Rivers lighting on fire and that sort of thing. And so the US and Canada got together. They identified where all those areas were, and then they basically prioritize them for restoration and remediation efforts because they could impact a broader area of the Great Lakes and really impact human health. Go ahead. Here in Wisconsin, we have five of those areas that were originally designated. One up in Lake Superior and then four along the Lake Michigan Basin. We're not an enforcement-led program. We're a stakeholder-driven program. So we basically gather people in the communities that are impacted by these things to develop plans to address impairments associated with all this sediment contamination and things like that, and identify what we really want to do about it, and then we implement actions to address those impairments. And these are things that are having to do with fish and wildlife impacts, aesthetic impacts, other social issues, economic impacts, so forth. And then, once we get through addressing all those things, we basically go through a process called delisting, and that's what we're really trying to do, is get rid of that area of concern designation because it's really kind of a blight on the communities that have it. You can go ahead. If you're at all familiar with Menetani Harbor, if you ever go up to Marinut and you go fishing, and you've spent a lot of time up there, that's an area where we've done a substantial amount of work. The photo on the left just kind of shows you what Menetani Harbor used to look like. It was full of excess sediment, some of it was contaminated, had a lot of issue with the sort of seawalls. It was unsafe. And so we worked with the City of Marinut and several of their partners to dredge that whole area out, do a large habitat restoration around it, and now it boasts, you know, sort of national wildlife fishing tournaments and other things like that. And so it's been a really great economic sort of generator for the city. I think they make about $1 million in a weekend when they have these national tournaments that they weren't able to capitalize on before. You can go ahead. I kind of already mentioned this. I'm really here to talk about Lower Green Bay and Fox River AOC, our area of concern. There's three sort of primary reasons why it's designated as that. And you can see the map on the right there in the red boundaries. That's basically showing you where we do most of our work. We had a really bad problem with contaminated sediments, as most people are aware. Bad degraded water quality, something we're still working on. And then, pretty substantial loss of fish and wildlife habitat. You can go on. As far as where we are in terms of the work that we've been doing, we've completed all of our actions in the program to address contaminated sediment through the Lower Fox River PCB Cleanup Project that was all finished up back in 2020. And now it's really monitoring for, you know, where it's sort of the water quality and fish concentrations are for PCBs. We're working through the poor water quality with all sorts of work in the watershed, and then we're in progress on our loss of fish and wildlife habitat. And that last one is what I'm really here to kind of talk about tonight. This just gives you kind of an understanding of how much habitat loss we've had in the area. So these are aerial images of the Duck Creek Delta. That's Duck Creek coming out there in that whole area behind that Cat Island chain, that sort of road that you see going out into the bay now. That used to be anywhere between 700 to about 1,000 acres of coastal wetland habitat. It's been really reduced for a lot of reasons. Some natural, but mostly a lot of human-driven issues, invasive species, water quality impacts, other things like that. And so we have situations like this all up and down the west shore, and especially along the Fox River, and so we're really looking at how to implement projects to get some of this habitat back for fish and wildlife. So you can go ahead. So for the last several years, since around 2018, we've been working with a lot of the local partners at, like, Fish and Wildlife Service, DNR, some of the municipal partners, to basically come up with a plan for projects that we want to do that we think are going to address our fish and wildlife issues. You can see on the right there, we've got about 12 projects all throughout that area of concern boundary that we're going to be implementing over the next several years. You can go ahead. So when we first started putting the plan together, it got done back in about 2020. I thought I had my entire career to get the plan done, right? 20, 30 years it was going to take because it was such a substantial investment. But more recently, bill funding's been infused to the Great Lakes Restoration Initiative, which is where we get the majority of our funding to do this work, to the tune of $1 billion. And EPA, who administers that funding, they came out with a press release in February of 2022 that named several areas of concern that they really wanted to focus efforts in and invest a lot of that money in. And I found out the same day as the rest of the world that Lower Green Bay and Fox River was one of them. So if you know anything about bill funding, we have to have the majority of it spent by about 2026, 2027. So where we thought we had 10, 20 years to get this work done, we now have until then to get a lot of this work done. So I've been going to a lot of the municipal leaders, doing a lot of roadshowing with a lot more of the recreational groups just to try to get awareness of this and build the partnership up so that we can really get these projects done in a really, really short timeline. Go ahead. It's a really busy sort of Gantt chart that you see here, but it just sort of demonstrates how much work we have to do just in the next few years. So yellow sort of shows you when we've been in feasibility phases for all these projects. Orange is design, green is construction, and then purple is maintenance and monitoring. As you can see, everything is pretty much constructed by the end of 2027 and then monitored and maintained out to 2030 is where the plans are at right now. You can go ahead. So as far as why Long Tail Point was one of the project areas that we chose, these two aerial images give you a really good sense of what's been happening out there. The one on the left shows 1952. That was at really high Great Lakes water levels as compared to 2020, when we've had the most recent high Great Lakes water levels. And you can see that the sort of extent of land at Long Tail Point has been really, really reduced. It's been losing resiliency over a number of years. The sort of breaks or breaches in it have been getting larger, and there's a lot of concerns that with an additional sort of sustained high water level period that it might get just completely blasted out of existence has been the big concern from a lot of our natural resource professionals over a number of years now. And if it goes, we could have a lot of impacts to that sort of leeward or the coastal habitat that's actually behind Cat or behind Long Tail Point. And then that would have, obviously, pretty strong shoreline impacts to both sort of public and private property. So we've been looking at ways to basically build up the beach and increase resilience out at Long Tail Point with a number of partners. And that's what we're really headed towards with this project. So you can go to the next slide. We've been working with the Corps of Engineers on some feasibility phase for what can actually be done out there. They need to do dredging in some of the Great Lakes harbors in Green Bay, so Okanto, Pensacola, Swamaco, over in Sturgeon Bay. They're hoping that they can find some good sort of sandy material that they could actually dredge and then place out at Long Tail Point to sort of build up the dune width and height out there so that we increase the resiliency a little bit, and then we'd go over and actually restore it with more native vegetation that increases resilience out there. So you can kind of see in the figure on the left, in all of the yellow areas, that's where we'd be hoping to place clean sand material to build up that beach sort of area. You can go to the next slide. Like I already said, invasive species management and then restoration would occur after that material was placed all along the entire length of the point. And then another aspect is that we're hoping to do some reefs for smallmouth bass and walleye spawning in the sort of Dead Horse Bay area and some of the really deep areas that wouldn't be impacting navigation. They're about, you know, depending on water levels, between nine and 12 feet deep out there. And you can just sign, see those figures, those three on the bottom there just show some different configurations that we've been sort of playing with, and we would like to implement and just see how they do. So you can go to the next slide. So as far as next steps, they finished up that feasibility phase. We have an estimated cost for construction now. The next thing that the Corps is actually going to be going and doing in May of this year is they're going to be looking at the sediment in all the harbors that I mentioned earlier, trying to make sure that we can actually find some of that clean sand to build the project. We would expect to have an answer on that by sort of August, September of this year. We've already started a design phase for the reefs. We're pretty sure that no matter what, we're going to try to move forward with those. So that's already been kicked off. There's also a sort of potential Phase 1 placement of material from the Swamaco Harbor because they would like to dredge that in late '24. That could be happening later this year. And then it would be followed by some restoration of that actual material placement in 2025. And then we're not going to get started with the actual design phase for the full length of the beach habitat or the beach nourishment and restoration until 2025. And then we're expecting to actually construct the project in 2026 if everything goes well and we can find a clean source of material. And then we'd be doing all the restoration after that for about a two- to three-year period. And then I think you can go. Yeah, so I'll stop there and just see if there's any sort of questions about the project overall.
During the period of time that this project is going on, so '24 through '25, really, two years? I mean, there's monitoring following that, but '24, '25, '26, that's when the actual restoration, the actual construction work?
Yep.
Is there, are there, maybe you don't know this, but what is, what are the thoughts on restrictions in terms of people using that piece of, that piece of land, going out there, visiting it?
Yeah, that's a really good question. I mean, obviously, we know that when you do dredge material placement projects like this, there's a very specific window of time that the DNR is going to want for permitting. I'm no different than anybody else in terms of managing these projects. I have to get all the same permits that everybody else does. So we have to avoid fish windows, critical sort of bird nesting windows, so that technically or typically can take us out to constructing the project sort of mid-July out through November, depending on the sort of weather conditions and things like that. I know that's also a time that a lot of duck hunters are out there recreating. We just went and met with the Duck Hunters Association, Green Bay Duck Hunters Association, last Monday and talked about this project a little bit. There would probably be some level of restrictions for when the actual material is being placed out there just to avoid any sort of dangerous conditions. But beyond that, there's no expectations that when the restoration is taking place and plantings are taking place, that there would be any level of restrictions out there.
Okay.
Do you ever feel it's best not to mess with Mother Nature?
I guess I would answer that question by saying that we mess with Mother Nature all the time. We really impacted the system a lot. We've shortened or hardened a lot of shorelines. We've changed the way that rivers flow. We've changed the way that sediment comes out of rivers through dams and things like that. We dredge all the time. That really changes the way that sediment dynamics happen. So we're kind of in a period now where I would say that we are almost obligated to do some of this work. And part of my job, I'm a restoration ecologist by trade, so I really look at it as, you know, maybe could the, you know, if some things changed, if we didn't dredge, if we took out dams, could this system maybe restore itself in 300 years, potentially? But we're really looking to make sure that that habitat stays there and that we're not losing resiliency, you know, for our generation or for the generation following ours, so.
Where, where are you getting that sand from?
The sand would hopefully be coming from other harbors in Green Bay. So Okanto or Pensacola Harbor, Sturgeon Bay.
And you say that that's clean. How, is it cleaned? I mean, how?
So we will be evaluating whether, we'll be evaluating all the sediment characteristics starting in May of this year to make sure that it's not only sandy enough because we don't want a bunch of silty material going out at Long Tail, right? That's just going to get blasted out, or that's going to cover up that really nice sandy, beachy habitat. And with that, the Corps has to do sediment characterization work as far as what the, any potential contaminants that are in it as well, too. So we're not sure that all of that material is clean yet, but that's what the characterization is for. If we find out that there's an issue with that sediment that's out there, that it's not sandy enough, or there's a contaminant issue that we are just not comfortable with making sure gets placed at Long Tail, then we'd be looking at sort of a Plan B alternative, which would be a, potentially bringing in some commercial material. We've talked even about, the Mississippi River has a ton of sand. They're basically looking to give it away for free. So we've talked about, you know, is there any potential to actually bring some of that material in? There would have to be a lot of, like, sort of alternatives generated if we can't get that material from one of the sort of neighboring harbors.
Is there a risk of making it worse?
There's always a risk associated with any project of this magnitude. That's part of what we look at pretty heavily, is what are the risks that are out there? What are the mitigating factors? I think that where we're at right now with the people that do work out there, with our land manager at DNR, since this is partially state property, is that there's a bigger risk with not doing anything.
Your budgetary estimates, I saw it was like 19 and a half million. Did you budget high, budget low, budget right where you thought? Because 19 and a half million seems like a lot, especially if some of that dredge material is coming from, let's say, Sturgeon Bay. You know, that would be a project that would get bid out, and that material basically would be at no cost to us. So where'd you come up with those estimates?
So the Corps is the one that came up with the estimates. Part of what's driving the cost is the cost to transport material from another harbor. And so they assumed, when they actually developed the cost estimates, that we're getting the material from Okanto Harbor. That would change, obviously, if we have to change, if we have to transport material all the way from Sturgeon Bay. And as far as, you know, how did they budget all that out? It's based on, I mean, they came up with those budgets within the last six months, so there isn't a big concern about inflation necessarily, but they've put a 20% to 30% contingency on all of their estimates. And they actually would have to cover the cost of some of that. So not all of that sort of 19 to 20 million dollars. And actually, they updated their budget recently and just sent it to me. It's looking more between 18 and 19 million. A portion of that they actually have to cover because they have to do the dredging anyway out of Okanto Harbor. So that's coming in at about $1 million and a half to $2 million that the Corps of Engineers would be covering through their sort of federal pot of funds that they use.
That's what I was going to add, too, because even the Swamaco River would be, you know, an Army Corps project that they would be dredging regardless, so that'd be coming out of their pot. So I was just wondering where you guys came up with those numbers.
Yep, so the Corps, they've been generating all of these. So I manage the project from DNR standpoint, but I work with a whole team of folks over at Army Corps who also manage the project and are helping us do the feasibility and look into all the dredging plans and things like that.
Other questions? I just have one more. So with the dredging, and I know you probably addressed this. So with the material that's going to be used from all these other harbors, that material would be tested. I guess my concern is, you know, are we going to be displacing PFOS potentially? And then adding additional PFOS to, that's my concern.
Yep, so I do not believe that we have made a decision on whether or not we're going to be asking the Corps of Engineers to look at PFOS in the Okanto Harbor. I believe that we probably will be asking them to do that. More of the concern with PFOS is coming through groundwater than it is with surface water. We have a lot of samples, water quality samples from many of the tributaries in Green Bay, and so we can see that it's not as, as primary of a concern, at least in the surface waters in those rivers. Now, in the sediment, that's a little bit of a different question. But those decisions are still up to be made on whether or not we're going to be requiring them to look at PFOS.
Is there going to be any opportunity for public input on that? Or municipal input?
Well, yes, I mean, we're definitely, part of the reason why I'm here and the next sort of couple of slides, we're gathering all the, I'm gathering all the municipal leaders together in a local leadership council to make sure that we're getting input from the sort of municipal lens. I really want to make sure that all these projects, I mean, obviously, there's environmental nexus. You know, we want to make sure that we're improving fish and wildlife habitat, but there are communities that are impacted by this as well. I can't possibly know all the priorities of all the different communities that I'm working in. And so really trying to work with Village of Swamaco and a number of others that are in the next slide to try to understand the constituents' sort of interests in all these projects and make sure that, you know, we're capitalizing as much as we can on any additional sort of economic or social benefits that we can get out of that. And so that group, we actually have commitment from all those folks that are listed there now and some others, and they're actually going to be kicking off in the beginning of March. So your administrator is invited to that, and hopefully, we can gather some of that feedback as well and make sure that public input is coming through more than just sort of a permit, right? Because that would be largely the time is when we're applying for a permit way, way down the line, and we don't want that to happen. I want to make sure that we're gathering that input really, really early in this process. The other thing I'll just mention as sort of a last note is the Corps is going to have to dredge those harbors no matter what. If they cannot find sort of a nearshore area to place that material, then they start looking upland, which has a really, really substantial cost to the taxpayer if they have to move that material upland also. So there is another sort of economic benefit that we haven't quite described here yet, and that would be if we don't have to place that material upland, you know, what does that cost savings, I guess? That's another way to look at things.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate your, your answers and your presentation. Last time, anyone else? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bree.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Administrator Kager, do we have someone?
I was assuming it was me myself, but if somebody from the board would like to take that role, I'd be happy to hand it off. Otherwise, I'm happy to take it.
Okay, I think it's up to you. If there's anybody else who wants input or wants to be part of that, let Administrator Kager know. Thank you. All right, moving on, we are on to item number seven this evening. Item, sorry, item number six, thank you. Item number six, public appearances. So anyone in the audience who's here to speak to an item not on the agenda, if you'd like to come forward now and let us know what's on your mind, please let us know your name, your address. If you are here for something on the agenda, we will do our best to open the floor for that item if you choose to speak at that time. Is there anyone here for an item not on the agenda? All right, very well. Then we will move now to item number seven, which is the consent agenda. This evening, consent agenda consists of the previous minutes of the village board dated February 5th, 2024, the January 2024 Municipal Court Report, and the item 7C, January 2024 Recreation Report.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a motion from Trustee Rodden to approve this evening's consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second from Trustee Eckert. Any further comments or questions on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries five to zero. Thank you. All right, we are on to item number eight. Administrative items, 8A is Ordinance 2024-03, Amending Section 5.04 Alcohol Beverages. Second reading, Deo Pisani. Welcome.
I'll actually take it from him, yes, thank you. So at the first reading, there were some questions from the board about Section 5.04 (11), which centers on the process for when there needs to be a hearing, and in particular, why the preponderance of evidence was struck and who should bear the cost of a transcript. And after further discussion with our attorney, we decided to just reference the state statute on how hearings should be ran, and that's Statute 125.12 (2)(B). And this really simplifies our code. It's also a benefit in the sense that if state statute changes, our code automatically updates to reflect the code and not be a, in conflict with what our, what our code says. And then in that statute, it talks about the board finding whether the complaint is found to be true, and this is a different legal threshold than, say, judging if there was a preponderance of the evidence. And the statute is also clear in saying that the licensee shall be provided a written transcript of the hearing at his or her expense. So both of those topics were addressed. And for tonight, the village board has the opportunity to either make a motion to approve or deny Ordinance 2024-03. Myself and Deputy Pisani are happy to answer any questions that the board may have. Thank you.
Are there questions for the deputy or the Mr. Administrator? Is there a discussion on this item from anyone on the board?
I think we went over most of the concerns last board meeting. I think those were addressed. So I don't see any issues here.
Okay. If there are no, if there is no discussion and no additional concerns, then I would offer a motion to approve the ordinance modifying Chapter 5 of the Municipal Code Licensing and Permits as stated.
I'll second that.
Motion on the floor made by myself to approve the ordinance modifying Chapter 5 of the Municipal Code Licensing and Permits. That was seconded by Trustee Rodden. Any other further questions or discussion on this item?
Can we have a roll call, please?
It is a roll call, yes.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Eckert.
Aye.
Trustee Netto.
Aye.
Trustee Rodden.
Aye.
President Finrazum.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, five to zero.
All right, thank you very much. All right, items, 8B, Windrush Development Agreement, Addendum 1. Administrator Kager?
Thank you. Let me pull it up here. All right, so the villages of Swamaco and CCSN entered into a development agreement last March to connect Windrush Drive with South Windrush Drive and install utilities. Village staff and the developer agree that applying the surface course of asphalt should wait until 2025. The proposed addendum would record that and financially guarantees the project via letter of credit as opposed to a cash escrow. Including your packet was a copy of the proposed addendum and the original development agreement. And so the motion, potential motion tonight would be to either move, approve or reject the Windrush Development Agreement, Addendum Number 1, as presented. Are there any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the Windrush Development Agreement as presented.
We have a motion on the floor to approve the addendum to the Windrush, the Windrush Development Agreement, Addendum Number 1. Boy, I must have not slept very good last night. We have that motion by Trustee Rodden. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Trustee Eckert. Any other further questions or discussion on this item? Madam Clerk, this is, as a financial ramification, could we get a roll call on this as well?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Trustee Eckert.
Aye.
Trustee Netto.
Aye.
Trustee Rodden.
Aye.
Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
President Finrazum.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, five to zero.
Excellent, thank you. All right, we are off to nine, item 9A, Planning and Zoning Items. 9A this evening is Ordinance 2024-02, Creating 5.15 Licensing of Short-Term Rentals. This is the second reading. Administrator Kager?
Thank you. Including the board packet is the second reading of Ordinance 2024-02. The following adjustments were made after the first reading discussion on February 5th. So we clarified Section 3A, which is to recognize a village of Swamaco a short-term rental license will only be required for those that exist on a parcel zone residential. And this eliminates any gray areas for hotels and other short-term rentals within a business district. We also merged two sections related to maintaining written records for each rental, and this was Section 3 (12) and 13. We updated Section 7A to reflect one internal bathroom for every six occupants. That was instead of four. We updated the reporting requirements to be done every July 1st or upon request of the clerk in Section 7D. And then if approved, the village board will need to consider the cost of a license, which can be determined at a future board meeting. All applicable forms will be developed administratively, but I anticipate using surrounding municipalities that already have them as a template. And staff would aim to have all of these that already have them as a template, and staff would aim to have all of these materials ready for public consumption by April 1st, which should allow ample time for short-term rental operators to comply with the new requirements before the ordinance would go into effect on July 1st of 2024. I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have, and the potential motion tonight would be to approve or reject ordinance 2024-02. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Administrator Kaker on this item? No? I mean, I appreciate all the changes that were made and all of the work that went into this, that's for sure. Is there a motion? I'm assuming we have some individuals who might like to speak to this. Is there a motion to open this up?
Motion to open the floor.
A second.
So we have a motion to open up the floor from Trustee Eckert and a second from Trustee Rodden. All those in favor of opening the floor for public comment?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Is there anyone who would like to come forward and speak to this item? If so, just please provide your name and your address and let us know what's on your mind.
My name is Tom Piarkey, 760 Riverside Drive.
Good evening.
And I just have a question. First, I heard of this, that they're putting something together in Swamaco, so I wanted to see what it was about. Of course, with the 2024 draft or 2025 draft coming up, everybody's wondering. A lot of people say, oh, geez, you got a nice spot there, maybe you should rent out some rooms or something. So we thought we'd come and find out what it's all about. Is this all available online that we can read this yet?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anything that addresses staying on a boat in the river?
That wouldn't be governed by that, I believe.
No.
That's what I was wondering. I didn't think it would be governed by that, or is there anything against that or for that, or?
Nope. No, this only has to do with home residents.
Okay. And is there have to be, is there a list of regulation stuff in this as far as how it all operates so far for short-term?
I'm not sure what you, yeah, there's a, there's pretty detailed discussion on it within, within the body of it.
Tom, if you're concerned about the draft, and you're only going to look at doing this for one long week or one long weekend.
Yeah, it wouldn't affect you.
We've talked about it in the past, we've got.
You should be fine within the new regulations that we've completed.
Okay, that's what I'm looking for, but this will be all available online that I can go read it?
Absolutely.
Oh, perfect.
Okay.
In fact, Alex is going to give you his card.
Is there anyone else who'd like to come forward and speak on this item? By all means. Welcome.
Thank you for the warm welcome. Appreciate it. Travis Hartwig, 2723 Fenmore Lane. Actually, I might be a little flustered here tonight. I came in a little late. I had a sick toddler puke on me before I came here, so I had to jump in the shower. But I did find this a very important issue, and in the community that those toddlers, those sick toddlers are going to grow up in, I thought it was very important to come in here tonight and be part of the process. A special thank you to my wife, who is handling those six sick toddlers tonight. A couple of weeks ago, you heard me approach this issue, looking for line item adjustments to improve this ordinance. I'd like to give the village staff and the board quite a bit of credit for working through a lot of those issues. I know that not each of those made me happy, and I know each of those didn't make all of you happy. That is the notion of compromise, and I appreciate you guys' openness to working through those. Tonight, I actually wanted to talk a little bit about the broader process and the broader ordinance as a whole. I would like to give credit as a whole for the transparency of staff and the trustees. As many of you know, I have reached out to you individually and tried to make time to learn from you and share what I know as an Airbnb operator in this community. Want to give credit for most of you that actually made the time for that conversation. It was very helpful to learn what you guys are looking at and also share what I am looking at. As a whole, one of the comments that I heard when we discussed this two weeks ago, almost verbatim from a trustee, was that this community is not ashwabanon. We are not a tourist town, and we do not want Airbnbs or short-term rentals here. I will definitely give that trustee a moment to respond to that later, but I did actually want to say, I agree with you to the extent we are not ashwabanon. We have a lot less Airbnbs here, we have a lot less issues, but we also have unique Swamaco-related items with this. Ironically, with this not being ashwabanon, the base in, by all definitions, this ordinance crafted by legal counsel is heavily, heavily, heavily based on the ashwabanon ordinance for ashwabanon's problems, for ashwabanon's solutions. And in our community, using the, the information that I have in the conversations that I've had, I know of one property that's actually had complaints against it. This is a, this is in part the issues that we have in front of us. Many of these line items in this long ordinance are not going to solve those problems. In particular, I would like to mention a couple of those complaints were related to noise. We have a noise ordinance in this community. The, the property did not get written up for the noise ordinance, and this does not solve those, those problems. In many cases, if the property owner were sitting in their backyard doing, if we were using, the beauty of an Airbnb is frequently that the people visiting our community get to use it as if it's their own property. We still respect, we still expect respect from them, we still expect them to treat our community well, but in many ways, putting additional rules on them is just treating, you know, at that point, we are, we're looking at, at different items. So one of, one of the examples of that is the actual requirement for how many guests per bathroom. Like I mentioned, we put that requirement in here, and I, we made improvements to it, but in this case, we are putting stricter requirements on a Airbnb guest than we do for residents in this community. We do not police how many bathrooms are per resident in this community, but we want to police how many bathrooms are per guest in this community. I think we had a couple of comments from other members of the board that they've stayed in Airbnbs in other communities where there were more people than, than the per six bath, per six individuals than we have for these bathrooms. In another comment that I wanted to actually talk about is that, that was heavily addressed last week, is we talked about protecting the taxpayer with this, with this plan. However, in my humble opinion, we tend to actually step away from that. You guys are well aware of how long this process has taken, how many calls to legal counsel have occurred, and how many issues have come up with that. In a few different areas in this ordinance, we talk about the different parts that the clerk will be involved in on an ongoing basis. In that discussion, we were talking about reporting requirements and the, the finance, what is her job title?
Director.
Finance director, thank you. We, we actually asked questions to her about how often she would need that information, and in many cases, she said she does not need that information. So instead of going from every 90 days, we lowered that to every year or as requested. Again, looking at items like that where the finance director does not actually need that information, but we could request it, a minor approach of just changing something like that to have it available upon request is very important to keeping her paperwork count down and the things across her desk and the, the impact to taxpayers. So another, another reason I want to address this is because, as a whole, we did not look at our issues here in Swamaco and use this ordinance to address those individual problems that we might have. We grabbed what ashwabanon found as their solution, and we applied it to Swamaco's problems. In that sense, we avoided the small government approach of looking to solutions for our problems. Instead, we wrote a solution that the problem does not yet exist in many cases, and a lot of these individual line items do not solve some of those problems. As a whole, like I mentioned, I was actually for parts of this ordinance. I just think that there are large parts of this ordinance that are redundant. As I've mentioned before, there are already health inspections on these properties, there are other rules that these properties already have to comply with. Our ordinance seems to overlap that with a second inspection, a second inspection fee, quite a different, quite a few different other items that are covered elsewhere in either state law or the health code. To that, to that notion, another reason I wanted to talk about this tonight is that, why people are actually using Airbnbs, because we've talked a lot about the impact for the community and, and different issues, but we have not talked about some of the positives that Airbnb or air, short-term rentals provide in different communities. I recently had the pleasure of staying at an Airbnb in a different community, and I was able to gather 11 friends, some of which I have not seen in eight years, and I got to play a card game across the table with them. In a hotel, a situation like that is very unlikely to happen. While it would be more expensive, I cannot gather that many people in a living room style environment, and it provides events like that. Airbnb actually keeps statistics on the allegations of parties at these residents, and it is less than 1% of 1%. So I do find that important. But on another sense, Airbnb, short-term rentals provide many other opportunities, not just Packer games. Unfortunately, we're looking at not renting our Airbnb this year because of life circumstance that come up. We are actually planning a long, long-term stay, well, technically, it would fall in a short-term stay for a rental sense in the Milwaukee area, and we have already started pricing out Airbnbs to stay there for a couple of months as our third child currently is expect, was, was expected in July, but we have moved up the delivery of that, and we are expecting to spend a significant, significant amount of time in the freighter to NICU. These type of rentals provide options for people that need to stay for a weekend, two weeks, three weeks, that are not provided elsewhere in the community. So I did want to kind of provide some of that. One of the items that we really did not talk about is the, the actual renter. A lot of this has to do with trying to get Airbnbs out of our community and.
I got to stop you there. No, please do. I'm sorry, this is, I know this is public comment, but, you know, I, and I appreciate your feedback, and I appreciate all that you're sharing. There's a couple of things, though, that, that, and by all means, you have the opportunity to go on. But I need to have this corrected because this is, this is not about trying to stop Airbnbs from coming to the Village of Swamaco. There already are Airbnbs here in the Village of Swamaco, of which you've had one. What rentals? That's, that's not what this is about. This is also not about parties. I mean, you can come to Swamaco anytime you want, and there's plenty of parties going on. What this is about, just to encapsulate this and not to, not to belabor this much more than I already have, what, what this is about is in Swamaco, we have unique properties. The properties in question, where we've had the, the majority of issues with our Airbnbs, are right next to each other, much closer than you and your neighbor are. They're sharing a resource, which is the bay and the beauty of the bay, in a very, very small area. So when we talk about this and why we have this, it's not to stop Airbnbs, it's to address the needs of our residents while allowing our other residents to do what they want with their property. And the last thing, and then I'll stop. Taking this right off the books of ashwabanon. Ashwabanon has a process and a policy, and quite frankly, a lot more legal resources than we have that did the research on this in the first place.
Briefly, I'd like to make the comment that that ordinance is.
Let me finish, and then you can.
I, I just want to make the, the brief comment on that, that the, that the ordinance is currently under litigation, though.
I understand that, and this will probably be under litigation as well, so I appreciate that. But I just want, I want to make it clear that this was not taken directly off the books from the Village of Ashwabanon. There was a lot of thought, and you mentioned it yourself, legal counsel and expense that went into this to craft this, to make this more specific. And you were in the last meeting when we did the first reading, when we went through this, and we made a lot of changes to this based on, on, on the feedback that was, was provided. So this isn't some sort of, you know, big government stepping and taking away, you know, it, it is exactly what you said it isn't, which is small government trying to address the needs of its community while trying to preserve the needs of other community members and bringing them all together. If, if we really wanted to go back in time and understand where this issue started and how we got to where we are today, then I think we need to look to Madison, and I think we need to look at the legislature that we have in Madison, who, quite frankly, in my opinion, and only my opinion, did a significant amount of overreach in dictating to us how we are going to manage our communities. I don't frankly understand that. But we are where we are, we have what we have, and, you know, just not to take away from your open discussion, which I already have, and I do promise, Trustee Eckert, I will be done. This is about small government and about what we've done to preserve our community and the rights of our residents, both who want Airbnbs and who do not. I'm sorry.
I don't have much to say. We've said it all. We don't have to all say it again. I wanted it stricter, you wanted it less strict. I'm voting for this tonight. Period. End of story.
And actually, that's one of my comments in here, I appreciate that.
So I, I just, I, we were getting a little off track, so.
No, I, I appreciate that, and I, I do want to, you know, I, I, I do agree with you that there are some unique properties in Swamaco, as there are in many communities. What this ordinance in, in particular drops is that we are treating our, our guests coming into this community differently than we are treating the people in this community. If a property owner used these properties is, as they have been complained about, as, as some of our guests have been complaining about, there would be nothing that we'd be talking about. We do have noise complaints already on, on the code, we already have many different other rules that encompass that. The, the rules actually change the moment that it's a guest, and that's one of the reasons that, you know, talking about property rights and talking about this being a small government approach, would like to actually, not to put Alex here on the spot, but in our, in our discussions, I believe we, for this being a small government approach and, and for us saying that this isn't about keeping Airbnbs out of our community, at one point, did a trustee actually ask if, how high we could put the, the permit fee so that we could keep these out of our community?
I don't recall that, no.
All right, in our discussion, I remember a different response, but I will allow him to keep that on record.
We did, we did ask, in, in a discussion very early on, that was an element that we had in discussion with legal counsel, is there a fee that we can put on this to regulate this, and you cannot.
To, to, yes, and, and that is the answer, but it was not a question, it shows our intent.
It was not to keep out Airbnbs.
Either way, who cares? Here's the ordinance. We've trashed it all out already. We've, we've done it. It's all done.
The entire, no, I, the entire intent of having this conversation is about the process.
Is just rehash it and keep saying it again?
No, this is, and I apologize if you believe this is an attack. I just want to stand up for the, the actual process. Instead of writing a long, long ordinance, I think the, the better solution is looking for the items that actually make an impact, and this goes the, the opposite way of making rules before an impact is needed. Anyway, at that approach, I appreciate your guys' time tonight. Like I said, I came in here for, to be part of the process, and I appreciate you guys inviting me in for that. You know, like I mentioned, we, as is clearly indicated here, we have disagreements about this. We are all trying to make Swamaco better, and I appreciate your guys' effort on that.
Well, continue to stay participating, and I appreciate your feedback, and I appreciate the adversity you went through to get here.
Yes, and I appreciate that, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to come forward to speak to this item? Anyone? Is there a motion to close public comment? I would make the motion to close public comment. Second. Oh, sorry, was there, did you?
You guys are good?
I would love to read to him, but I present it to the board, sorry, but.
You're good.
Okay. So I've, I've made a motion, there's a motion on the floor to close, close public So I've made a motion, there's a motion on the floor to close public comment, is there a second?
Second.
We got a second from trustee Andrews. Any other further comments or questions?
No, motion to approve ordinance 2024-02.
We've got, the motion has been made to approve, and the motion has been seconded, just any additional comments? All right, hearing no comments, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, everyone.
All right, well, we haven't approved, we just approved closing comment.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2024-02 as presented in the second reading.
All right, now we have a motion to approve the ordinance as stated. Is there a second? And now we have a second from Mr. Andrews. So just to, Madam Clerk, just to clarify, I made the motion to go out of public comment, trustee Andrews made the second, okay? Now we're making the motion, which is from trustee Rodden to approve, and the second is also from trustee Andrews.
Correct.
All right.
And I'll take a roll call for you.
Yes, you will.
Trustee Netto.
Aye.
Trustee Rodden.
Aye.
Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Eckert.
Aye.
President Venrazum.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously five to zero.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, we are off to item number 9B. This is a request by Jay Fisher Properties for approval of a two-lot certified survey map as prepared by Verbicker, changing the current duplex into a zero-lot line duplex, parcel SU887 Zone Residential Sewer located on the northeast corner of Maple Grove and Halley Court. One moment, do we need to take a recess?
No, we're good.
All right. Administrator Kaker, if you will.
Thank you. So the applicant is looking to take the original duplex and divide it into two individual properties. The duplex was constructed in 1995, and at that time, Swamaco Sanitary allowed for the single sewer connection. Staff is not recommending any changes to the sewer as part of this CSM. It is currently served by a private well, and a document has been created to address this shared well, and this will be recorded along with the CSM. Our current municipal code requires that when attaching dwelling units are created, matters of mutual concern to the adjacent property owners due to construction, catastrophe, and maintenance shall be guarded against by private covenants and deed restrictions, and the approving authority shall not be held responsible for the same. Staff has seen the Declaration of Covenants and restrictions created for this property, and it does appear to address any village concerns. Easements for gas, electric sewer, and other utilities are part of that document, and this document will also be recorded with the CSM. The Wisconsin Uniform Dwelling Code would require that a firewall be established between the two units, and it does appear that this was installed as part of the original construction. And as existing units, no Parkland fees will be required for the CSM. And so the potential motion for the village board tonight would be to recommend either approval or denial of a two-lot certified survey map for SU887, creating a zero-lot line duplex with the following conditions that are listed in your packet, and this motion was approved or recommended for approval by your planning and zoning commission last week. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
No, the only concern that came up with planning and zoning was the ability to secure a home loan, I guess with the zero lot line, but I said, we all agreed that that's not our issue, that's the homeowner's issue. So if there isn't any questions, I'll make a motion to recommend a two-lot certified survey map for SU-887, creating a zero-lot line duplex with the following conditions, that the Declaration of Joint Use well and Declaration of Covenants and Restrictions for a zero-lot line documents are recorded with the CSM, and that it meets all applicable ordinances, regulations, and reviewing agencies.
Second. Thank you, we have a motion on the floor from trustee Rodden to approve the two-lot certified survey map for SU887 with the conditions as stated, and we have a second from trustee Andrews. Is there any other further discussions or questions on this item? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Okay, thank you. We are off to item number 10 this evening. Item number 10 features public works and utility items. Of that, we have a item A, which is Lineville Construction Update from none other than our director, Smits.
All right, thank you.
Real quick, before you get into that, with Paul Panticchio going to the private sector, are they just going, do they have an interim?
So they have an interim highway commissioner, and it's Cole Rungy, who is also their planning director.
Okay.
He's the interim, but they've hired a consultant to kind of act as the lead engineering firm, aside from JT, to help them facilitate this project.
I just was talking about just other issues within our village that the county, you know, has, I guess, authority over.
Yep, so Cole Rungy is the interim highway commissioner until they fill the position.
Excellent, thank you, sir.
All right, Lineville Road Construction Update, so just so everybody knows, there is a link through the village's website as well to get to this page here, and Alex can quickly show you how he got there. So on the link that JT has provided, they are the construction consultant for the project. They have separated the project into multiple years, so there's going to be a Phase 1 and a Phase 2 for both years '24 and '25. So under Phase 1 of 2024, you'll see the layout of the traffic flow, the limits of construction, and the detour routes, along with the dates of anticipated construction. So top right gives you the construction timeline for those estimated, or those sections that will be under construction. Again, everything's tentative, weather-dependent, everything looks good right now with the weather we've had, so they should have no delays on getting started and should be able to get right into it. The biggest item that everybody's working around related to this project is the school, so a lot of areas that are incorporated in this project are not starting or starting before or after school gets out and school goes back into session here come late summer, early fall. So with that, the section that will be done first is going to be the section from Carolina Cherry to just west of the Velp, or just Velp west of the Cardinal Roundabout. So last fall, if you guys remember, they did some, they did the east-west lanes, bypassed lanes into the Belmont Roundabout, so now they'll be grabbing onto those two lanes and working their way to the east. That pond on the north side of the section in red is already constructed, which you guys have seen, so they'll be doing that section plus the small piece on Cardinal. The goal for the spot on Cardinal is to have that all done before school goes back into session come August. That's kind of their big push there, so that free-flowing traffic can get back up into the school. So it shows the detour route up on kind of the middle right there, the dashed, green dashed pattern there. They'll show you their main, I mean, there's roads in between and other ways to go about it, but the posted detour will be, or detour, or phase 1 will be that. So each phase has this layout, you guys can look at it, if you have any questions, let me know. There'll be a lot of moving parts over the next two years down there, it's going to be extremely congested and a pain in the butt, but it's a much-needed project, and we're definitely getting close to getting underway.
Is Brown County doing the actual construction of this Phase 1, or who's?
There'll be, so Michael's Construction was...
They were, okay.
Yep, so the big project was bid out, the Brown County staff is going to do, I believe, most of the paving, so they'll do all the asphalt work with their own staff. They did do both pond constructions, or the one pond, they're working on the second one now. So there is parts that they will try to take care of with their own staff, it just keeps costs down a little bit, but together they'll, Brown County, working with JT, will facilitate the project. But Michael's will be the lead contractor on this project.
I like the, I like the maps and the timelines.
Yep.
So it gives everybody as good of an idea as possible, and it looks like between August and November, those businesses in that little section make sure everybody continues to patronize them and...
So we've had extensive meetings with all the businesses and every stakeholder involved along Lineville. This Thursday, at the Brown County Public Works Facility, there is another PIM meeting, so it'll be the second public involvement meeting. Again, everybody's invited, it's been advertised for a month now or so. But again, I know that JT, the county, and myself have met with almost all the businesses along there, and we've been very upfront with what's going on, how things are going to be handled, who to contact for different elements of the project. So, you know, as much as we can, we're trying to incorporate, you know, their businesses and the operation that they need to maintain while this happens.
Any other questions for Director Smits on this item?
No, thank you. And it's good, you know, it's good to talk about it, if anybody has ideas, and just to make everybody aware of what's happening.
If anybody has concerns or has any questions, just send them our way.
I mean, regular updates like this are invaluable.
Yeah, that's good.
They really are. Okay, we are off to item 10B, 2024 roadway reconstruction bid, S2401, the award. Once again, we are with Director Smits for this.
Thank you, we'll try to keep it moving. We opened bids for our annual road reservicing project, S2401, on Wednesday, January 17th, here at the Municipal Service Center. We had received favorable bidding that we thought, we received bids from two contractors, MCC and Northeast Asphalt. Staff prepared plans and specs, we bid them out, worked through the bidding process, and MCC came in at the, with the lowest bid, have approximately $916,187.34. We had just over a million dollars this year planned for our capital road resurfacing plan, so we added a couple of roads that we wanted to add in the beginning but didn't think we were going to be able to afford, so we ran some numbers on that, we received some pricing, and we will try to add those two roads through a change order right away to get everything on to MCC's schedule upfront. It's always a little more challenging, and you get not as good a pricing if you try to add something like mid-part or midway through the summer. Once their schedule's full, their prices go up. So we added Wood Lane all the way from St. Pat's to Northwoods Road. We had the section in the middle included this year, but the whole thing should be done, so we're going to run that all the way through. And then we added a small piece on Pinecrest Road where the road is failing pretty bad, so we'll add those two. And then we also added the walking path to the tennis/pickleball courts from Idlewild Park. We got a price for that. So altogether, we're looking here for approval and award of contract S2401 for the 2024 roadway reconstruction project to MCC, Inc., for a bid price of $916,187.34, and also approving change order 1, that would bring the total price to $1,8436.64. And the second motion that we would like to have, if approved, would be to itemize Part K of the contract, which is the tennis court paving of that, of the award, so that we can note that that $10,528 will be used for, from impact fees as part of the project.
The Idlewild path, so that it goes to the tennis court from where?
Just goes from the parking lot, the gravel parking lot, from that, it's like 140 feet, I think it is, from the gravel parking lot to the tennis court. And then we have the shed that was donated by Eagle Scout a few years ago right there. So the users of the tennis pickleball court, a lot of times they use the picking tables and stuff that are under the lean-to on the north side of that, so they change their shoes and do whatever on the picking tables, but then they got to walk across grass and gravel back up onto the surface. So what we've noticed since the tennis court was redone is that stone, small fine stone particles that attach to the grips of your shoes get dragged out onto the courts, and you'll see the first, like, four or five feet where those stones come off is starting to wear out the surface of the tennis court. So we put some mats down, some other like cow mats essentially, trying to act as a traction, tracking pad, you know, to try to get that stuff off, but it'd be best if people could walk along a surface, a hard surface, before getting to that tennis court, that would really preserve the life of that. Also, it would be cleaner, people wouldn't have to wear their good exercising shoes across grass or wet, you know, conditions to get back up onto the court. So we were going to tie that all in there, I think it's like 140 feet, it's got a bump out of like 15 by 40, and we were going to pave that as part of our road project, as part of our road project contract.
But you're using impact, you're using park impact fees.
Yep.
That's a good idea, the impact fees.
And we talked about it last week at our Tuesday meeting, and Park and Rec Committee recommended using the park impact fees.
Good idea.
And our user groups do a nice job, our Monday, Wednesday, Friday morning groups as far as sweeping the stones so they don't get dragged as much, but again, as Andy mentioned, keep sweeping the stones and stuff, it's eventually going to wear tear on the surface. This will help, a preventative, to prolong the longevity of those courts, proactive measure.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Hang on, one second, Dan. Before you approve the change order, we did see a reduction in price that I forgot about because it was not updated on here.
Do you have a?
So if you want to reduce the $1,800,000 by 2,500, so we got some reduction on the Wood Lane pricing from the original one, so just...
Right away, you want me to do math?
Yeah, I'll do it real quick. I thought I did it on here, but it wasn't updated.
We'll take a reduction. It's a good thing it's not an increase, otherwise it would have to come out of somebody's salary.
Yeah, I'd probably be mine.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the award of contract S2401, 2024 roadway reconstruction project to MCC, Inc., for the bid price of 16,000, or I'm sorry, $916,187.34, plus change order number 1 for the total price of $1,000,000...
$1,000,000.
So there's a motion on the floor to approve the award of contract S2401, 2024 roadway reconstruction project to MCC Incorporated, for the bid price of $916,187.34, plus the change order number 1 for a total price of $1,5,936.64. Do I have a second? I have a second from trustee Netto on this. Is there any further questions or discussion on this? Roll call, please.
Trustee Rodden.
Aye.
Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Eckert.
Aye.
Trustee Netto.
Aye.
President Venrazum.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously five to zero.
And then I'll provide a secondary motion to approve Part K of contract S2401 for the price of $10,528, and we're going to be using Parkland impact fees to cover those costs.
And just a note on that, that is to be taken out of the full bid price of $1,5,936.64, correct?
Correct.
Okay, just for the record, so there's a motion on the floor, do I have a second to trustee Rodden's?
Second.
I have a second from trustee Andrews. Madam Clerk, could we have a roll call, please?
Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Eckert.
Aye.
Trustee Netto.
Aye.
Trustee Rodden.
Aye.
President Venrazum.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously five to zero.
Thank you. Well, Director Smits, it seems to be your floor this evening, item C, Engineering Services. Either we get none of you, or we get all of you.
I skipped last meeting, so I got to make up for it.
You do.
All right, Cedar Corp. Engineering Services. So staff is looking to utilize Cedar Corporation for select engineering services. These services may only be used for short-term, for a short term, but in case we need them long-term, this addendum sets us up to do so. We would be looking to have Cedar Corp. perform site plan subdivision review and stormwater management review services for the village for the remainder of this year. I'm hoping once our new staff members are trained and experienced, we will again be able to take over completing these tasks back with our own staff here at the village, but I think we need to use outside professionals at this time just to make sure our butts are covered as we go through a couple of projects that we got here this summer. So we already have a service agreement with Cedar Corp. from back in like 2015 when they performed some services for the village, so we don't need a new service agreement, we just need addendum acknowledged, and we will then use a letter of authorization for project specific, for each project specifically, so anytime a project comes forward that we're going to use them for, we'll sign a letter of authorization for just that project, and that says they're going to perform XYZ, and they'll bill us on a time and material platform for that particular project. So tonight, we would be looking to have the board approve or deny the addendum to our original agreement for professional services from 2015.
Can, I have to ask, you still think it'll stay within your budget?
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Well, and remember this, too, that, so if there's a stormwater plan that needs to be reviewed, we will have Cedar Corp. do that work, they'll bill us, and then we bill the developer, so it's costing costs out.
So any developer project, well, it'll basically be a pass-through cost, so normally we would charge them a rate for the time spent on those projects, so it's really no different, it's either we are charging them our engineering rate or somebody else is charging them. The only one that we aren't, it's not a direct pass-through, is for stormwater management plan review, so if it's a site developed here in the village and it's a commercial site, they pay the stormwater fee, which we increased a couple of months ago. site, they pay the stormwater fee, which we increased a couple months ago, you know, they'll pay that fee as part of their permit. That fee then should cover the cost of review of that plan. So it shouldn't, the village shouldn't see any increased cost for this.
Okay, so what we have before us, and you had mentioned through the end of this year, do we put a date on this?
The addendum, I believe, is only good for one year.
I believe so, I think I saw.
Yep, so the term of it is through January 2025. So if we were to continue with Cedar Corp. next year, we would bring this back and continue.
Okay, I'm just going to, I just would like to include that in the, in the motion, I think, through January of 2025?
It actually states, "The project in which services apply is referring to his project described generally," it recalls, yeah, the first page, it just, third paragraph.
Okay.
"called in February 2024 through January 2025."
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to approve the addendum to our original agreement for the professional services we receive, professional services dated 2015 for Cedar Corporation.
So we have a motion on the floor from Trustee Rodden to approve the addendum to the original agreement for professional services from Cedar Corp., as stated within the agreement. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second from Trustee Andrews. Any further questions or discussion on this item? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Can I take a roll call on this one?
If yes, I guess you need to.
Trustee Eckert.
Aye.
Trustee Netto.
Aye.
Trustee Rodden.
Aye.
Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
President Van Rossum.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, five to zero.
Thank you.
Okay, save that for a later time, I guess. All right, moving on. Item 11, Fire Department Items, Resolution 24003, Accepting a Drone from the Swamaco Firefighters Volunteer Association, Chief Burgler.
Thank you. The fire association has been raising funds for approximately four months now to purchase a drone to assist the fire department and other village Swamaco agencies in various capacities. Some of the uses would be to search for missing people, to kind of get a bird's eye view on fires, and I had spoke with Andy and Nick, if they, you know, need something for his engineering tax, or if Nick wanted to use it for any park thing, it would be a village asset. So the fire station would like to officially donate to the drone to the village of Swamaco. If there's any questions, though, for you to ask them.
You know, money, how much is it going to cost? You got to train people.
Correct. So the, right now we have two drone pilots that are officially licensed, that were, actually took the class last year. The cost has significantly decreased from what it was. Bill Bonnwell actually, he used to do it in person interview, or training, actually not interview, training, and now it's an online one, so it's 200 bucks a person, so we're not putting the whole department through it. We are having limited drone operators, just for, one of the reasons is for the cost, obviously, but not everybody, we don't want everybody flying, either. It is an expensive piece of equipment, and we don't want your amateur, you know, drone operator just driving around or operating it, so there'd just be probably a team of four or five that would operate it. And most of those already have had a license for it.
Okay, I have a, okay, so other departments within the village would also be able to use it?
Correct.
It doesn't sound like it's going to be real expensive upkeep?
Correct, no. I mean, so the manufacturer did provide a one-year warranty on it, I think we took out the three-year package on it, so it's covered, I think, for three years, don't quote me on that, but.
Could it possibly save money? I mean.
So yes, that's actually, I mean, that's the goal of it, to save staff time, I guess, especially for the fire department and police department, when you're searching for a missing person or getting a bird's eye view on a fire, especially the missing person is to be able to locate them sooner than later, and reducing that staff time and putting boots on the ground, so that's, that's, that's the benefit of it.
What if, what if somebody from another part, like a, like Bellevue, or any, what if they want to, are we, are we the only ones with it? Are they going to be always calling us?
So no, I did speak with the captain, the Sheriff's Department. So Green Bay Metro, they have a drone similar to ours, which has infrared. The Sheriff's Department does have a drone, but there's not infrared, so we'll be the second, I guess, department or agency in Brown County with the infrared drone, to be able to read infrared images. I did tell them our limitations, we're not staff 24/7, so we'd probably be that second call, usually Green Bay Fire would probably be first, but if they're looking for multiple drone operators, you know, they would, we'd assist them as well, so. But Green Bay Metro is 24/7 staff, we're not staffed at night, so during the day, I see that us being used with our staff that we have on, being paid already, but at night, it would probably be not as frequent, except for in the village of Swamaco.
I mean, I can see Pulaski, Howard, but, I mean, if it got to the point where everybody's calling you.
So the, a few of the DEOs will be trained in as well, so they would be allowed to take that drone with obviously permission down to whatever, so would, trainers staff time on that, or staff, you know, paying staff for that, so they would be paid by the Sheriff's Department in that aspect, then.
So I'm, I'm familiar with DJI drones, I have one, not nearly as expensive as this particular one. I, I think you can speak real quickly to the benefit of these drones, even when the big, the last big Pulaski fire, and how a drone really helped the firefighters on the, on the ground be able to fight those fires. I think, secondly, I'm assuming, and I hate to assume anything, but our insurance would cover this in case it crashes, correct?
Correct. So the first year, I know for sure, that to me.
Not after, yeah, and I understand DJI's warranty, you know, you can crash it once, it's a hundred dollars to replace it or whatever.
Correct.
But I'm talking about, you know, we crash into a fire, you get into hot embers, you know, bad things can happen pretty quick, so I just want to make sure that this is fully covered underneath our municipality insurance. And then I think, you know, mutual aid with this type of equipment is covered underneath our tri-county agreement, correct?
Correct, yeah.
All right, so yeah, if you want to speak to how it helped with the Pulaski fire, I think that would.
So Green Bay Metro brought their drone out there, they were the only ones at the time with one, and, you know, that, the fire kind of, I'd say, pretty much stayed in one building, but getting a bird's eye view, I mean, the ladders only go so tall, and getting a bird's eye view of seeing where the hot spots are, you can see, when there's a lot of smoke, it's harder for a firefighter to see where that smoke is really coming from, I mean, whether it's in, you know, left corner, right corner, whatever it is, but with that infrared camera, you can see exactly where that, that intense heat is coming from. So it really helped in the Pulaski fire. I wasn't on that side a lot, but I know, I think actually, Trustee Netto has a little experience with that as well, I've talked to them, gave them a better view of where, where to put that water.
So I've got a question. I'm just curious, what's the flying range of this drone?
Now you're, you know what, I'm not the drone geek, I'm sorry, I, I don't know.
It's further than you want it to go away from you. It's, I think it's over a mile.
Yeah.
Way, way, way over a mile, yeah. It's, it's crazy how far they'll fly.
You do need a FVA license in order to fly this, so.
Okay.
So like you said, it won't be everybody in the department driving this, similar to the boat, there'd be a few trained operators. If they're not available, then it wouldn't be, if it was mutually requested, then we just wouldn't be available.
Okay, so is there, are there any further questions or discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 24003, a resolution thanking the Swamaco Firefighters Association for their donation of, Swamaco, further donation to the Swamaco Fire Department as presented.
Is there a second to Trustee Rodden's motion?
Second.
So we have a second from Trustee Netto, just to read this into the record, then. The Board of Trustees, this is Resolution 24003, there has been a motion for approval and a second. The Board of Trustees, the Village Board of Swamaco do resolve as follows, whereas the Swamaco Board of Trustees recognizes the valuable role of unmanned aerial vehicles, UAVs, commonly known as drones, in enhancing public safety and emergency response efforts, and whereas drones offer numerous societal benefits, including locating missing persons in vast or difficult to access areas and expediting search and rescue missions, operations, detecting forest fires early, enabling faster containment and minimizing damage, assisting fire departments in fighting structured fires by providing aerial views and real-time data for improved situational awareness and strategic decision-making, whereas Swamaco Firefighters Association, Volunteer Association demonstrated its unwavering commitment to the safety and well-being of our community by generously purchasing and donating the DJIM30T drone valued at $11,575 to the Swamaco Fire Department, and now therefore be it resolved that the Village of Swamaco Board of Trustees expresses its sincere gratitude and appreciation to the Swamaco Firefighters Volunteer Association for its invaluable contribution of this lifesaving equipment will undoubtedly enhance the capabilities of the Swamaco Fire Department, enabling them to respond to emergencies more effectively and protect lives and property. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be presented to the Swamaco Firefighters Volunteer Association as a token of our appreciation. There has been a motion on the floor to approve, and it has been seconded. May I have a roll call on this?
Absolutely. Trustee Netto.
Aye.
Trustee Rodden.
Aye.
Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Eckert.
Aye.
President Van Rossum.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 12, Discussion on Future Agenda Items. Does anyone have any future agenda items that they would like to get on the board for our next visit?
So I don't know if it's the next visit, but as some of you may or may not know, that our current village, our previous village sexton has retired. I didn't know until a couple meetings ago that he has been our sexton at that cemetery for 50 years. That's impressive, and there's a lot of knowledge. So I think at one of these coming board member, or meetings, and I think Alex.
It's in the works.
It is in the works, right, all right, that we have a sincere recognition for his efforts. And then also, in that same time, thanking Holly, thanking Michelle for all of their efforts to, and Andy and his team, to digitalize and really bring that cemetery up to 2024, because there's a lot of handwritten notes and a lot of information. My, my mind hurts looking at all that information, so.
Did you hear the stories about the Civil War burials?
A lot of, a lot of, I'll just leave it this, I met with Ronnie last week, and he said, yeah, I stopped selling plots over in the southwest corner because I kept finding bones. And I'm like, huh, okay, all right. So with that, I do appreciate, I do appreciate everything that he's done, and I look forward to thanking him publicly.
Okay, any other items for the future agenda? Hearing none, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Trustee Andrews has given us the liberty of a motion to adjourn this evening. Is there a second?